Good evening. This is Mary Kate Decors, the Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling our Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:38 on Monday, October 20, 2025. This is an open hybrid meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It is being recorded by the Auburn Public... in the Auburn Public Library Merriam Room. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Vision. Is anyone else recording this meeting? The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Wednesday, October 8, 2025, that included the link and the dial-up information to access the meeting remotely. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Matt Toth?
Present.
Erica Briesacher?
Present.
Vera Corain?
Present.
Nan Johnson?
Present.
Lindsay Baker? And I am present. APL staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Michael Zeller, APL Director?
Present.
Awesome. So, the first item on our agenda this evening is to review and to possibly approve the minutes from September 4, 2025. Does everyone have the minutes?
I do have an extra one.
Can you slide me one?
No, no. No longer.
Thank you. I want to make sure that everybody has time to review the minutes. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. I'll say Vera. So I'm going to do a roll call. Matt is yes. Erica?
Yes.
Vera's yes. Nan?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yes.
Excellent, and I am a yes, so that's unanimous. We're going to move to the second item on the agenda, which is public comment. Do we have anyone here with public comment? Yes.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Patricia Joyce, and I've just attended the book group, moved out of this Merriam room for your meeting tonight. As the town committee that often speaks to wanting even more adult programs, I'm speaking here for the women of the book group. Yes, the book discussion is 60 minutes, but socially, we usually leave the room. And actually, this time is usually the room we have... usually the time that we've cleared the room. Your meeting was scheduled for Monday, October 6, but not held then because the chairman did not post an agenda. I don't know if it's in the request or in the granting, but I would ask that this room not be shared on the same evening for a meeting of 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thank you. The book club that we had tonight wanted to show a video, but was worried that the discussion that we had for the book that we read would not allow enough time for the video to be shown. And so there was a little bit of rush in our meeting. But we meet as a social group, and had we not learned, had not one of us seen that your meeting was scheduled for the same night and had acted on it and managed to have the cable set up ahead of time? Because had we not known cable might have been imposed on to have their camera equipment being set up during our meeting, which curiously happened one time before, which would make me believe that it would be known that that would be a problem when we have a group of people in a book club meeting. So I hope, you know, some consideration would be given with the trustees and the library director that, you know, it looks to happen again about two meetings colliding in the same room. Thank you.
Okay. So I have to just take responsibility for that. That was my mistake. And so just to just request that I make... so I'm clear, we have agreed as a board to meet at 6:30 on the first Monday of every month. Is that correct?
I think it was 6:00 p.m. on the first Monday.
6:00 p.m. on the first Monday. Would that in any way impose upon the book club? No. Not on the first? Okay. Very good. So that's my... I just want to own that because that had nothing to do with anyone else on the board that was my mistake. So thank you for your commentary. Do we have item number three? Update on the strategic plan.
Update on the strategic plan?
Yes.
Yes, we get... I can go first.
Yeah.
Yep. So with Barbara is now back, our consultant who's been helping us. Had some family tragedy that she was dealing with, but she is back now. Has been focusing a lot on compiling information from the various surveys, focus groups, et cetera, into some usable reporting data that I'm certainly happy... I didn't bring it tonight because it's just a lot of paperwork, but if the Board of Trustees is interested in seeing that, I'm certainly happy to provide that. It's just kind of summaries of various projects and reports and things into a format that's a little bit easier to digest in order to start applying that to the actual plan itself. So I'm happy we can do that after the meeting. The next and final Strategic Planning Advisory Committee meeting is on this Wednesday, October 22, at 6:00 p.m., where we will be going over most of that information from the plan and starting to come up with some recommendations for focus areas that we want the plan to actually be applied to.
Yeah. And then I think the big ticket for us is, you know, we will need a November meeting. And so do we want to do that? Stick with the first Monday of the 6:00 p.m.? Kind of get on track with our... Yes. So what does that mean?
Let me just... I'm going to look that up right now. So the first Monday at 6:00 p.m. would be November 3 at 6:00 p.m. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
And here in the Merriam Room. And again, my apologies to the board as well as to the patrons. My mistake.
So yeah, so in that meeting, once we run the Barbara's put together a really nice summary, that kind of starts to get at objectives and, you know, goals for the library. And I have read through them. Mike and I are going to take a pass with the advisory committee meeting this Wednesday. We'll have them look at it, and then we'll bring it to the board, you know, at the following board meeting. But I think I'm really encouraged. I think what Barbara put together is really strong. I think it's excellent. To me, having followed closely along with survey results and the, you know, the public, the focus groups and everything, I mean, I think it really encapsulates very clearly and very well, and feels very fresh compared to what was in the prior strategic plan. It feels very connected with what we've been talking about, trying to kind of get a clear vision, a clear mission onboard. So I'm super excited, and I think you guys hopefully will be too, because I think it's really demonstrative that she's really done a great job, I think, of following along and really digging into the material. And I'm super excited to see what you guys think. Yeah.
Yep.
She was a great hire the first time. Great hire this time.
Yeah. And through enormous personal challenges. So I just all... so many shout-outs to Barbara for how wonderful she's been through this process.
Yes. Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I think she has now worked with me on like 75% or 85% of the strategic plans I've ever developed.
Wow.
Um, but that does move... I don't know if you officially want to announce it, but it is part of the strategic plan of mission and vision. So that's the next item on the agenda.
Great.
I sent this all out to you already.
Yes.
So the two that are highlighted in yellow are the two that we're thinking of going with for the mission and the vision statement. These were constructed, both Lindsay and I came up with some drafts. We ran it by you folks. We ran it by the staff, took in that feedback to make some edits, talked with Barbara a little bit. So these mission and vision statements are the culmination of all that feedback. I can... I guess I can read them out.
Yeah, I was going to stick for the public record. Yeah.
Well, maybe first just, was there any feedback or people kind of were pretty happy or not?
Well, I really tried. I couldn't.
Right.
I have not a correction to make or a different choice than either one of them, although I thought the others were interesting.
Yes. Yes.
But that was... they were both perfect summaries, I thought, of all the information. It was good.
And I had one statement.
You did? I did.
I know. I'm sorry. That was a... I should have... I should have just put in bullet points, and it would have been no problem.
I kept saying, oh, we're going to make them someone nicer and more concise, and the advice was, no.
Yeah. So apologies for the confusion. That's why Lindsay's urgent, these are all numbered. So I'll just read them out then for the viewers. So the mission statement that we'll be going with is, "With guidance and support from the Board of Trustees, the Auburn Public Library provides curated resources, knowledgeable staff, practical services, and engaging programming in an accessible welcoming facility in order to meet the diverse informational and recreational needs of the community." And for the vision statement, "The Auburn Public Library is a community hub that promotes social engagement, creativity, personal enrichment, and lifelong learning for all community members and visitors." If you look at a lot of different libraries' websites, there's a lot of... they're very similar, but that makes sense given the purpose. I didn't know. Did the board want to vote on their approval or their thumbs up or?
Or do we... let's put a vote in the next meeting's agenda alongside some of the other work that we'll certainly, I think, just to be up and up. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that way, if anyone has any final comment, feedback, we can circle back to these next week. I wanted to just point out that I think it was really important to us based on a lot of direct feedback from the advisory committee and others, that we made sure that we really highlighted that it's resources, it's the people, it's the staff, it's all of the services, it's the programming. And accessibility came up time and again in meetings and focus groups. And so we really wanted to make sure that those words were featured and in here. And, you know, I think for the vision statement, just keeping it really succinct was important and really focusing on both kind of that social engagement, you know, social and the community and individual are represented in that vision of this is a place to feel connected to your community, but also to, you know, to work on yourself and learn and grow. So just to say that, I think, yeah, from so much feedback, I think he's really distilled down the essence of the conversations we've had the last year.
Great.
All right. So next agenda, we will vote on mission and vision. That'll give the board time to digest, to give back any final feedback.
Excellent. So the next item, we have Friends of APL Mission Statement Discussion Clarification of Role in Fundraising. Nan, do you want to take the lead on that?
Sure. You have a copy of the last meeting. We had some discussion at the very end of the meeting on how we were going to be funding the addition or whatever you call it, the expansion. And we mentioned a number of things. We were very happy to at least consider that we were not going to be looking for an override. We felt that there was a way to manipulate the budget enough and appreciate the contribution that the Pappas Foundation would be making. So at that point, we mentioned a possibility of a foundation that would be similar to the one in Truesbury, and that would be used. We were clear in that fundraising was not a part of this board nor of the library, so we would again rely on another venue of some sort. Friends were mentioned in Webster, how they had supported their library, and we are not looking for that kind of support, and it's not possible with the statement here. So let me just read it real quickly for you. "The Friends of the Auburn Public Library is an independent, nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to raising money through donation, book sales, and other activities, and to donate those funds to the library for materials, services, and programs not funded through the municipal budget. The Friends is a group of citizens who volunteer their time to help financially support APL. APL is a vital educational and cultural asset to the community. APL is a comfortable and welcoming place where people of all ages and cultures come together in person or online to experience the joy of reading, express their creativity, satisfy their curiosity, and create sheer content." I think they capture our mission statement as well.
I was going to say, that sounds very similar.
All right. So just to clarify, we are not looking to the Friends to do any monetary support or fundraising. Thank you.
And I did...
Thank you.
Yeah. And just building off of that, I wanted to mention this at some point during the meeting. I did talk to my old director over at Truesbury about their foundation, and she is happy to set up a meeting to talk to anyone, whether it's the VOT or stakeholders in the community about like how that in a very witty, gritty way works with the library. So if anybody is interested in that, let me know.
At some point, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can set up a meeting with her, and she can come by her to a virtual thing.
Well, I'm kind of glad that Friends discussed this because the whole question of foundation sounded like it would interfere maybe with some of the work that they did. But if it's clear now that they're not looking for any major fundraising opportunities, then the foundation is really the only other way, because we can't do it by law. So in order to be able to see if you can get some of that, those larger contributions, we'd have to have a foundation.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I'm happy to set that meeting up where people can get some information from her.
Great. Yeah. The next item on the agenda, Director's Report and Update on Staffing, Programming, and Hours of Operation.
Right. I have a lot to talk about this time. But first off, I can just all get the little...
I love these. Makes me so happy.
But I'll just read that off. So in September, the Auburn Public Library welcomed 7,596 visitors, loaned 8,995 physical items, loaned 2,378 ebooks, fulfilled 1,752 polls, hosted 52 events with 1,322 attendees, loaned 40 museum passes, and hosted 444 computer sessions for 252 hours.
Nice.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Pretty darn good.
Yeah.
At some point, we probably need to have a spreadsheet or something with these September or August/September so we can see... or you already know that the trend.
Yeah. There's always... I mean, there's always a dip after the summer because all the summer reading stuff, there's an enormous spike, but that'll tend to go up a little bit during the winter again, and you know, there's kind of the flow of the years. But yeah, it's always useful when you can kind of compare year to year and see how things stack up. So that's the eventual plan, is once we've collected for a while. Does anybody... I think you all have the budget sheets. So the... it's the top one should be the overall state of the budget, and then below that is each of the bill schedules that David usually puts together. So I don't know if anybody's had any questions about this one since it seems pretty straightforward this month, I think. I don't think there's anything particularly unusual.
Do you think we could do these ahead of time?
Oh, yeah. Yep. That's with the... if that's easier, I can definitely do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not a problem.
On the year-to-date, my computer service line, I guess, SBC, where it says 30,000, 30,000 has already been expended at 40,000, so it leaves just a little under 10K for available. What is the driver of that?
Yeah. It's like 25,000 is our CEBMORs subscription.
Okay. It's like a annual, so that hits that line. Okay. That's...
That's always 25,000.
Okay. I was just like, wow, we can burn through that.
And a lot of computers.
Okay.
That's where traditionally the CEBMORs membership is come from. That's something like 24,000 or 25,000.
Okay. And then there's like two different computer update lines?
Yeah. So all of the 066 lines are capital lines.
Those are the capital.
Yeah. So there's some lingering stuff. One of those was already spent. That was... most of that was for the new computers that we'll be deploying soon, and a few other, like, and the printers. That was the other thing, the new printing system that we moved to. But yeah, the plan is to... because some of those capital lines have been hanging around for a little while, and the plan is to try and run through all of that this year because we don't really want that lingering around for too long.
And then on the library materials, just like, is that also kind of like, there's a maybe a slightly larger upfront, like at the beginning of the fiscal year, there's some... just thinking about like what's left, 65 out of the 102. It's only a couple months into the budget year, so curious on that.
Yeah. It's a lot of that is the youth spending, just because there's a lot happening with summer reading, because we actually, we had a sort of materials acquisitions meeting recently to go over things, and I actually feel like most of our lines are a little behind. So I think that's probably being primarily led by services. But yeah, overall, we're in a good spot with materials, a little fair amount. But I'll... there's a couple of things that I'll get into if they stop with that over in the report.
I heard something on the news that you can make a follow-up on after about book suppliers like Eastwood.
Oh, yes.
And I was curious if that's going to affect your budget at all or not really.
Only in Vic... Yeah. I mean, I don't know if you want me to talk about that now or... So historically with library in the United States, with library suppliers, there have been two major ones, Ingram and Baker &amp; Taylor. And I think, yeah, probably because it's academia too, it's usually those two. Baker &amp; Taylor just announced that they're going out of business. So it doesn't really impact us because almost all of our buying goes through Ingram, where most libraries you do either one or the other, and do Ingram. So it doesn't directly impact us, but it does fundamentally change the landscape now because they were one of the two major players, and now there's only one left. So, you know, there's a lot of talk about whether Amazon will try to move into that gap or... because I just don't think Ingram has the resources to expand to fill that, or whether some of the other smaller suppliers will grow. The short of it is, it's not really going to affect us immediately in any way, shape, or form, but the changing landscape will ultimately impact things in some factor.
Makes sense. Thank you. I was curious. I saw... I get library news. My algorithm. I need library news. Sorry.
It is a big deal. It's been one of the two major library suppliers for like 200 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else before we move on to Library of Things update?
Oh, I have more. Director's... But I just, if anybody has any other budget comments.
Yes.
Okay. So just moving on to some of my other updates, I wanted to let people know, the Reference/ Adult Programming Librarian, the hiring process is underway. We... I posted a few weeks ago. Actually, today was the deadline for initial review. We had almost 50 applications, which is very...
Awesome.
That's a lot.
It's a lot.
Which is great. I mean, there's been great candidates. It's going to take a little bit longer than I had thought to go through all of those, but I'm hoping... originally, I'd been hoping to start interviews this week, but I think realistically that that's just not going to happen. So we'll probably start interviews next week, once everyone has had a chance to review the candidates, and we've been able to talk about, you know, which ones we want to bring in for an interview. But yeah, that's very exciting. That's a really important position that I'm looking forward to filling.
That's great. We're very excited. We are.
Does anyone have any questions about that? The other thing I wanted to talk about, in the next one to two months, we're also looking to roll out a new digital platform called Hoopla. A lot of other libraries use Hoopla. It's kind of like library streaming, basically. You can watch video content, you can listen to audio content, they have music and ebooks. There are regular books on there, and it functions very much like any of your other streaming platforms, like people log in with their account, and they can just watch stuff or listen to stuff. It's been very, very, very popular at any library that I know has ever hosted it. So actually, going back to our materials budget, when we reviewed it, that was one of the things that we wanted to talk about, is like, how healthy is our budget? Are we like, are we spending everything on the stuff that we need now, or can we add some additional items? And this was decided that we... we talked about maybe doing this next fiscal year, but the team decided that there was enough wiggle room that we could roll it out now. Because it's very modular as far as cost, but it can get very expensive because it's actually per... there's no flat fee. The library pays per item that it's used. So if patrons use a lot of items, it can get very expensive, but there are ways to manage that. So it's not just like, if it got super popular, your patrons can spend you into insolvency or anything like that. You can set cutoff points. But it's very popular, and I believe Boston Public Library actually just dropped it. So since Molly's come back, I've had her looking into a lot of databases. As Massachusetts residents, everybody has access to APL's collection. And so because they already have a lot of databases, this was one gap that we saw that we could fill. So seemed like a good opportunity.
Do you know why they dropped it?
I think it was the cost.
Just the cost.
Yeah. I think it just started to get too expensive. I mean, when I was in Truesbury, we were spending over $10,000 a year on it, so we won't be spending that much here. But any questions about that?
You can put some controls on it.
Yes. Yeah. You can definitely restrict it so that you can manage it in a more reasonable way.
Now, it sounds great. We haven't had anything like that before, right?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think right now, the only real database that we pay for is the News Bank, like the Massachusetts and U.S. newspaper collection. Oh, I did forget. Oh, I did forget one thing, backing up to the Reference Librarian. So my, my plan as of now, when that person is hired and has been onboarded and settled in, I know we talked a little bit about changing the hours, that, I feel like that's the cleanest point, to make that adjustment, when we'll, we'll be open a little bit later in the evenings, and we'll start doing full days on, on Saturday.
Yay!
Awesome.
That's the, that's the plan. Well, I still have to crunch a few numbers with Dave to make sure staffing will work, but it, it seems to, like that will be the case.
And that sounds great. I think that will be well received by the community.
Totally.
Both of these things, very exciting.
Yeah, no, full day Saturdays, I think, make a big difference, because it, it just makes things more accessible.
Great.
One last thing before we move on to Library of Things. I had sent out an email about this, and, and you can, I apologize if I'm nagging people, but there is that annual statewide Board of Trustees meeting on November 1st.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody, I'll go with you, if anybody wants to say, it is a Saturday.
But is the focus on legislation? That's what I took away from it.
Um, I mean, it, it is on advocacy and support. They do different, like, they have different speakers every year. It's run by the, I believe MBLC runs it, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. So they have different things, but it's basically just like giving you updates about where the state is at, and then also giving you some items in your toolkit that you can use to advocate and support the library.
I, I can make sure I attended those when we were trying to do the strategic plan, because I found that people were so helpful at that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, if nobody wants to, that's fine, but.
Well, it's just, I, I thought the point was a lot of legislation advocacy, that's all. I've been to Friends, and they are wonderful networking places, I do enjoy that. But I thought, no, I'm not really into the legislation part, so if you can convince me, otherwise I'd be more than happy to.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine, it's, they always hold it at Truusbury, it's usually a good time, they cater in the food school, so. But yeah, I mean, just, if anybody is thinking of doing it, we should decide very soon, because that's coming up very quickly.
Can you give us the specifics?
I just looked, it's November 1st, start at 10:00 in Truusbury.
Okay. At the library?
Yes, yep. Yeah.
You have to register.
Okay.
There's usually a very big turnout, it's usually pretty full.
Okay.
Because, yeah, they'll bring librarians from all over Massachusetts go to that, and trustees.
Is there, is it conducive with any childcare, or is it just an adult?
Yeah, it's pretty much just adults.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, think, think about it, you should probably decide in the next day or two.
No pressure.
No, it's fine, I've been to, obviously, I, I went to a number of, of those over the years, because I used to work there. But I just wanted to get it out there.
Yeah, thank you.
In the interest of networking.
Great job representation, but I think some of you cannot make that.
I'll, I'll confer and see if, if I can attend, I might be able to.
Okay. Yeah, it is, it is usually good if at least one person from libraries go, and if, if you feel so inclined, I will free up my schedule to be there as well.
Okay.
Yay, another move.
The next item is Library of Things status.
Yes, so this has slipped a little bit to the back burner, I, I think it's pretty much ready to go, I'll, I'll be honest. Just with everything else going on, I wasn't devoting a lot of time and energy to it. But now that Molly is back, I think we can focus a little bit more, so I'm hoping to launch very, very soon. I think it's pretty much ready to go, I just have to check with my staff about things.
We have a list of items that you might have for the first.
Yeah, I don't have one right on hand, but yeah, I think we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not out by then.
Got a couple of interesting things?
We do, oh yeah, there's, there's a sewing machine, right? I'm not imagining that. There's some like a drill bit set, there's some board games.
That's a good start.
Yes, it is, it is.
And we're hoping to use that little piece of furniture right out there that's currently empty, or not, not the, I'm sorry, not the shelves, the little thing around the corner that is empty at the moment, that we have the summer reading stuff on. But yeah, I mean, apologies for letting that one slide a little bit, but it is, it has been, the team's been plugging along at it.
I think you've had a lot to do.
A little bit.
Do we have an update and overview of the APL redesign?
Yes. Okay, so, oops, my notes. So we did, as of, last week, two weeks ago, I'm trying to remember, we did get our drafts back from Molly, the architect. Myself and some of my team went through them, were very happy with, you know, it was draft, so every plan had some slightly different things, some things we liked, some things we didn't, but a sort of amalgamated plan, we were very happy with. I've shared them with the town manager, we talked a little bit about them, she was very happy with them. So the next step is, we're actually in the process of scheduling a meeting, I know I talked with Matthew the other day about that. We're scheduling a meeting of just the little towns working group to, you know, get some feedback from some of the other town officials on what they think of things, and then we'll move forward from there.
Any questions about that? So the last piece, of course, we are, we are, so we're in agreement that our next POT meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 3rd at 6:00 PM, and it will, we'll offer it hybrid as well, but my question, going back to the co-chairs of the strategic plan, do we, what are we thinking in terms of, historically, we've taken a little time off, we can leave it flex if we need to have. So what are you thinking in terms of after the November 3rd, what needs you might have as a, as a?
I know talking with Barbara, so given the nature of federal funding at the point, we're not quite under the same time crunch that we might, if we slip into next year a little bit, it, it really doesn't impact anything. It would just be, we couldn't apply for any statewide grants, which we can't do now anyways, because there aren't any. So it's, it's sort of a, um, more just like a, you know, courtesy thing. In general, you want to have an active strategic plan. So we had talked about maybe having everything finalized to vote on for a January meeting.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if, it certainly wouldn't hurt to have a December meeting to get caught up on a few things. There, there might be some things to discuss in the, in the interim, but I think if it does slip to January, it's not really impacting anything.
Okay.
So with that in mind, do we want to just skip November altogether? And just, and hold the first Monday of December as our last, like, just take a break for November?
Whatever the team decides, I'll support.
Well, I have a question with regard to January, I don't know which one, the first Monday is. Is it too close to New Year? Are we all gonna be foggy?
What does that mean there?
Well, the kids, the kids go back to school. The kids go back to school that day, January 5th.
Okay.
So at least I know I'll be back in the state.
Okay. So there's a possibility, so what we're thinking about is skipping, skipping November, and then December would be Monday, December 1st at 6:00?
Skipping that one too, right?
Potentially, I don't know, it's, I, I think it depends, like, how do we want us to try to get it done for December and take the vote? I mean, it seems possible, but not, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely doable.
Okay.
You know, it's just an issue of, we'll be pretty much wrapping things up as of Wednesday, as of all the data collection. It's just a question of actually writing everything out. You know, alternatively, I'm happy to share everything with people via email, and as long as everyone has a chance to go over everything, we could hit the ground running strong in, in January. Yeah, it, it's really six of one.
So there's going to be a November meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if we, I mean, I think we should definitely have either a November or a December, but I don't think we need to do that.
So what is the, what's the, what's the pleasure of the board, because I, I have no preference?
It depends on what available information, if this is going to be ready in November, and that will push it forward, otherwise we'll wait.
I mean, my impression is that the final polish with charts and graphs and colors and community profile and everything will be fully packaged for.
Probably not in two weeks.
Yeah. But the core of it, which would get us maybe in the right mindset to take a vote in January of the key goals, the objectives, the tethering that to the mission and vision, which we just looked at, we could vote a mission and vision, we could have a productive conversation about the, you know, the draft goals and objectives, which then would propel and give Barbara the final fuel for getting everything polished for January. So maybe that's the thing that to me would be productive.
Yeah, I think that's.
So December maybe sounds like a more reasonable, uh?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll certainly have more to talk about in December.
In two weeks or?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's taking.
And again, we don't need a vote, but is it, are we a consensus that Monday, December 1st at 6:00 PM? Yes? Okay, let's do that then. Then do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just one second.
Okay.
I forgot to say something earlier, I had some feedback from one of the schools that came here for all the library things that they've done for years, and they said this was really something else this year.
Great.
That people really enjoyed themselves, felt very comfortable and extremely welcoming. So I want to at least pass that on.
That's, that's good to hear, well, I, my team has done a tremendous job.
Yes, they have.
Our new Youth Services Librarian Andrea has really, really put a tremendous amount of effort into the, the school visits and, and all of that. As has all of the team, but I know she really created very quickly a very strong program for them.
I appreciated her direct outreach inviting us to the Halloween event next week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I just wanted to plug, I brought my girl to see Street Fighter in here, and I love the fact that you're showing movies in here. And so David was telling me that, are you having a Godzilla period too? Which that's exciting. Can you just take, take a minute to talk about that, just so, because people might not be aware that we're showing movies in here and?
Yeah, they, they wanted to do, I'll be honest, I, I haven't been as on top of this one, this is more of a Dave and Andrea and Molly thing. I don't know if you want to bring up anything about Molly.
I think the 8th, November 8th, the Saturday is gonna be the movie, and then that week before, there'll be some other Godzilla activities.
Awesome.
That's so cool.
That is so cool, thank you for doing that, we appreciate it.
Yeah, well, the hope, the hope is, once we get the Reference and Adult Programming Librarian on board, they can kind of take this ball and run with it, and just having somebody who's able to focus a significant part of their workday on developing these kind of fun programs for adults or families is, will be helpful.
It is, and, and we had our vision five years ago, it was a community hub, and we all mentioned that when we came in, that the parking lot is packed, there's a variety of opportunities, like the movie, that was just, it's just so intimate, it's sweet, it's a sweet offering, so thank you for that.
I'm glad to see an alternative activity from sports, it's nice to see something a little, even if it's Godzilla movies, a little more cultural.
Agree. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have second? That second, is that you, Matt? All right, so at 7:21 PM, we are adjourning, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.